Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We'd like to welcome you to the recess meeting of the City of Starkville Board of Alderman. We will stand for the pledge of allegiance, please, followed by the invocation by Reverend Thomas Rogers, and we will follow that with a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic in which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please bow to your head for a moment, pray. Father, and Hail, we thank you again for the privilege of our support of you, Lord, and again grateful for the joy of the journey, how you blessed us, kept us all day long. We thank you, Lord, for grace and mercy. Lord, we thank you for these. You have appointed our mayor, Lord, and the board of Alderman. We thank you, Lord, for their leadership. Lord, we thank you for what you have done through them already and what you moved in. And, Lord, for the sake of your people, we lifted them before you, Lord, asking that you give them guidance. Lord, give them a heart and concern and compassion for the care of your people. Lord, we thank you for all things. We do ask these things of Jesus your name.
Amen.
All right. Thank you, everyone, for being here. We will move to our first order of business is going to be the approval of the official agenda, including consented items. And there are a couple of items that we're going to pull from the agenda. If the board would look, item nine, mayor's business, pulling the holiday schedule. There are a couple of things on there we need to revisit and make sure that we've got the proper dates on. And then we have pulled the special event Frostbite Half Marathon, which is under Department Business, Community Development, two, Planning, A. And then pulled, under the Fire Department, the permission to purchase the self-controlled breathing apparatus, apparently that no longer exists. Is that correct, chief? Is that the way to put that? Okay, thank you. And I think that is, I believe that's it of the things I have knowledge of. Do we have any other items or any other changes to the agenda?
Vice Mayor, can I ask, Mayor?
Vice Mayor, you may be.
Mayor, under Board Business, I want to remove items C, D, E, and F.
Okay, we'll pull those from the consent agenda, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
All right.
And there is, yeah, under Human Resources.
Yes, sir.
G2, just pull it from the consent agenda.
Okay, pull from consent, and that's the Advertising for the Community Development Director, okay?
Yes, ma'am. That'll be on, Mayor.
All right. Anyone else have any issues or any agenda items they'd like to either add to the consent agenda or pull from the consent agenda?
I do, two potentially, Mayor. Under item 11, Department Business, B, Planning, item two, or, excuse me, item B and item F. But I've asked the city planner real quick, just to make sure those first two, let me pull that up. Item E is the preliminary plat, this is at the north Montgomery. Could you just explain what that is, please?
It's just two lots that are reconfiguring the lot lines between them. Those two lots are going to be two lots. The one of return is specifically the property that's behind Wood Lots 9A, just we added 9A.
So same property owner, they're just reconfiguring the lot line?
Correct, that was the same property, there's a return, correct?
Yes. Mayor, I would move to put item E and item F on consent.
Okay, do we have any objections to items E and F under planning to be put on consent? Any objections? No objections? Seeing none, those items will go on consent. Thank you, Mr. Hamilton. Okay, do we have any other items?
Mayor?
Alderman Carter.
Also, under Planning, item two, is there any reason for the first three not to be on consent?
Item, I'm sorry, item.
First, two, Planning, two A, two B.
We have pulled item two A, the Frostbite Marathon is not ready to be, it's going to come forward, I think, the first, second meeting in October.
Item B?
It's postponed. Item B, that's, those are special events, and I believe we have an objection normally to special events being put on consent. Is that correct, gentlemen?
Correct.
Okay, that's the reason, so, okay. Anything else? Alderman Miller? Okay.
Mayor, one other request. Attorney, do we have anything for potential land acquisition for executive session?
Vice Mayor, I'm glad you brought that up. No, that was a placeholder, and we don't, so we can strike that for this evening.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, we will strike item A under executive session, potential land acquisition. Okay, any other changes or adjustments? All right, seeing none, I would entertain a motion for approval of the official agenda, including the consented items as revised.
Move it, move it, second.
I have a motion from Alderman Little, a second from Alderman Miller. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, I will now read the consented items. So if y'all will bear with me for a moment. Consideration of the minutes of the August 7th, 2018 Special Call Work Session Meeting of the Mayor and Board of Alderman of the City of Starkville, Mississippi. Consideration of the minutes of the August 17th, 2018 Work Session Meeting of the Mayor and Board of Alderman of the City of Starkville, Mississippi. Consideration of the minutes of the August 21st, 2018 Recess Meeting of the Mayor and Board of Alderman of the City of Starkville, Mississippi. Consideration of the minutes of the August 27th, 2018 Special Call Meeting of the Mayor and Board of Alderman of the City of Starkville, Mississippi. And consideration of the minutes of the August 31st, 2018 Work Session Meeting of the Mayor and Board of Alderman of the City of Starkville, Mississippi. Under the second page, we have mayor's business, consideration of entering into an agreement with Lime to provide bike sharing opportunities in locations throughout the city. Under Board Business, we have consideration of the appointment of five Starkville Election Commissioners per Mississippi Code 2315-221. Joel, would you pull that up, and let's just read those names off for the record, please? Okay, we have Rowan Howe, Jason Hauser, Dave Holly, P.C. McLaren, and Seth Pounds. And I think I saw a few folks in the audience, and so I just want to say thank you very much for being here, and you have been placed on the consent agenda, so, thank you.
Give him a stand, Mayor.
I'm sorry?
Mayor, you give him a stand.
Okay, sure. For those of you who are here, Ms. Howe, would you stand? Okay, do we have anyone else here who's of the Election Commission? Okay, thank you so much for appearing, we appreciate it. All right.
Vice Mayor?
Vice Mayor, I'm sorry.
Mayor, just one thing, just consistency, we have the former reporter for the commercial dispatch.
I was gonna, I will do that when I get to it, is that okay?
That's fine.
All right, thank you. We will acknowledge Mr. Smith here in just a second. All right, under Airport, we have request authorization to approve final work change order for Columbus Fence for fence and gate signs from the 2017 FAA AIP Grant 3-28-0068-022-2017 at a cost of $343.50 to the city and $6,526.50 from grant funds. Under Planning, we have item D, which is consideration of the appointment of Carl Smith as the Ward Two Commissioner for the Starkville Planning and Zoning Commission for the remainder of the current term. Mr. Smith, it is a pleasure to see you. We thank you for joining us for a different kind of role than you had before. It is, Mr. Smith used to be the reporter for one of the local newspapers. Well, that's true, both newspapers, so we are delighted that you're willing to volunteer for us. Thank you very much. Item E is consideration of preliminary plat 18-07 and final plat 18-04, request for preliminary and final plat approval for subdividing and reconfiguring two lots at 516 and 518 South Montgomery Street in a C2 zone with parcel numbers 102A-00-277.00 and 102A-00-279.00. Item F is consideration of preliminary plat 18-12 and final plat 18-10, request for preliminary and final plat approval for subdividing and reconfiguring two lots at 402 Greensboro Street in an R1 zone with parcel numbers 1180-00-318.00 and 118, oh, that's actually an O, not a zero, -00-319.00. Under Engineering, we have consideration of declaring the street department 2001 Schaeff Rubber Tire Excavator Model Number HML31, serial number 03215955 as surplus and authorization to auction on govdeals.com or govdeals.gov or whatever it is. Under Finance Administration, we have acceptance of the August 2018 financial statement. And number three is consideration of the approval to accept the lowest and best bid received for October 1, 2018, and September 30, 2019, source of supply listing for the Starkville General City Departments. Under Human Resources, we have number one, consideration of proposal for employee medical, dental, and vision benefit plans and administrative service contract with Blue Cross Blue Shield for January 1, 2019, through December 31, 2019. Request authorization to hire Marquez Quinn as a community development administrator in the community development department. Number four is request authorization to hire Marla Rogers as part-time maintenance worker in the sanitation and environmental services department. Number five is request authorization to hire Will Murfree as an aircraft lineman, FBO, in the Starkville Airport Department. Number six is request authorization to hire Brandy Gann as the accountant in the Starkville Utilities Department. Number seven is request authorization to hire Kristy Culberson as the office manager in the Starkville Utilities Department. Number eight is request authorization to advertise for an executive administrative assistant in the Starkville Utilities Department. Under Parks, we have consideration of declaring a 1997 Ford F-150 VIN number 1FTDF1728VNC25129, one steel grill, one wooden picnic table, one popcorn machine, one ice machine, one ice bin, one stove and range, and one backflow preventer as surplus and authorization to auction on GovDeals. Number two is consideration of approval to extend concessions lease agreement with Fred Tate until December 31, 2018. Under Utilities, we have request authorization to utilize the SEDC Auto Q Service and one-time setup fee of $15,000 with monthly fees to be based on usage each month. Number two is request authorization to accept the lowest and best quote for one emergency generator and one automatic transfer switch for use at the Starkville Utilities Electric Operations Center for $31,174 from cumin sales and service, and declare the current emergency generator located at the Starkville Utilities Electric Operations Center as surplus. And last but not least, is request authorization for Stephen Wade and Randall Criswell to travel to Jackson, Tennessee, to attend the lineman apprenticeship Lab Four Underground on October 8th through 12th, 2018, with advanced travel for both not to exceed $3,320. All right, and that concludes our consent agenda. Under Announcements and Comments, I have a mayor's announcement, and I am pleased to acknowledge the fourth grade Girl Scout troop 20320. In attendance is a requirement to obtain their inside government badge. Do we have, would y'all like to stand for us? I'm guessing y'all are the short ones with the green vest on, is that right? All right. Do we have a spokesperson? Do we have, we don't? Okay, all right. Well, welcome, and we're glad that you are learning from our particular style of government, and we're happy to have you here. So hopefully that badge will be soon, will be forthcoming soon. Thank you very much. All right, I have no other comments. Do we have any Board of Alderman comments? Mrs. Sistrum, Alderman Sistrum.
I would like to, I would like to thank the people who've volunteered their time to serve on the Election Commission and on the Planning and Zoning Commission. It's great to see people get involved with their community, and it's really, these are both very important tasks, and we appreciate your volunteering to do them. Thank you very much. And such a cute baby.
Absolutely, all right. Anyone else? Mr. Carter?
I'll use the opportunity, John, are you going to come up at some point and speak with Lime bikes? I know from an education standpoint, you need all the exposure you can get, but would you want to use this opportunity now to come up and speak, or? Let's do that.
Sure, come right over here to the mic and identify yourself, and you can tell the board about your little microphone.
So my name is John Essery. I went to Mississippi State. I graduated back in December of last year. I've been living here in Starkville, about five years now. I work for Lime. We are hoping to bring, who should I be speaking to? Can everybody?
Turn around to the public. We are on Facebook Live, so.
Okay. So I work for Lime, maybe if any of you have been on campus lately, you've seen the green bicycle around, that's us. We are hoping to bring it here off campus to the City of Starkville as well. Aside from just bringing bicycles everywhere, we really want to give the City of Starkville and its citizens access to transportation and a greater sense of just, you know, cars and walking. We really want to bridge the gap, especially talking about the first and last mile transportation, whether that's getting from your house to your apartment to the bus stop, to your office, or maybe just getting from your dorm room to the classroom before your 8:00 AM class. Trying to revolutionize the way people think about transportation and moving around the cities, you know, especially if you talk about the lifestyle of having no cars, that really becoming more accessible and more possible as we integrate with our existing transportation here in Starkville. We're not here to take that over or to replace that, we want to make it better and help it grow and help achieve the city of Starkville that are already in place.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Any other questions? Any questions from the board?
No, as I said, I use it, obviously, I told you earlier, I used it a couple times this weekend, you know, a dollar to unlock, a dollar to ride, 30 minutes. Just kind of one of those things, I kind of look at all angles and sides, and I don't see anything really negative of this. The questions I've received so far are two more, the extent of, you know, what happens if I drive it home? And obviously, y'all come, you say, come and pick them up, the few that may ride outside the hub of downtown, or?
Right.
And then, go ahead.
We will never go on somebody's property that's on your front porch. We might come knocking on your door and ask permission, or, by the means, we'll never cross into your backyard or anything like that. You know, I certainly will know where they are, but I would never, that's very important to us, is safety and respect. It's not crossing on a private property, whether that's a business or somebody's home.
And then the second thing, Alderman Walker spoke to this on Friday, but through an education, we're going to tell the public not to occupy any parking spots, you know, in the city, I've already had a couple people call and said, oh, you know, y'all aren't going to be taking our parking spots downtown? And he spoke to that Friday, so absolutely not. But I do, I think it's a great program, so, thank you.
Did I hear you say that you rode it a couple times this week?
I did, and my son did, and.
Cool. Well, I know Alderman Miller did too, so.
Yeah, it was cool, very cool.
Outstanding. Well, thank you very much. We're looking forward to it. Are they going to be dropped tomorrow? Y'all going to start tomorrow?
Yeah.
Well, let's go.
If you're ready, I'm ready.
All right, thank you very much. Any other board comments? All right, we next have an opportunity for citizens' comments. You have three minutes. You can come tell the board anything you choose, and we, if you would identify yourself, and if possible, the ward you live in, so we can, we can know kind of where you are.
Greetings to the Mayor and Board, my name is Avon Turner.
Good evening, Mr. Turner.
I want to recognize Mayor.
Thank you.
Board of Alderman, Law Enforcement, NAACP President, Chris Taylor. Here lately, we begin to get kind of, with two ambulances running in the city, we kind of getting crossed up, and they want me to ask how far do one ambulance go over to the other. They getting kind of, they see two ambulances, but they don't know where they come from or anything like that, so that they just want me to bring that to see, can we get, you know, what's what. And also again, as I said at the last board meeting, our military, it goes off and fight for our country, and they come home and they try to leave. So for citizens, let's not provoke any military, whether it be Green Beret, Navy, Army, Air Force, any of that, because they are trained on a level that are, it's just not good to provoke them, and we appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. All right, we have anyone else wanting to? Yes, sir.
My name is John Tolliver.
Yes, sir.
I live at 26 Choctaw Road, Rolling Hill Subdivision, Ward Six.
Yes, sir.
On the, on the 5th of September, sewage water backed into my house. And it was not our fault that it happened, but we've been displaced from our homes since the 7th of September in a hotel that we've been paying for until yesterday, and it's only by the grace of God that we were able to find a red house. But we're still having to travel back and forth to take care of our animals, our animal at the house. We've lost some stuff. We've tried to get in touch with some people, but because we have a lot of stuff, it seems like we're being penalized for having stuff. But I would like to be reimbursed for our stay at the hotel, and if there is any reimbursement in place for the rental property that we'll be staying in, the food that we've had to purchase for staying at a hotel, doctor bills for, we've lost quite a few things, articles in new boxes that got damaged because of water, sewage water that wasn't our fault coming back into our house. And all I'm asking this esteemed board is that we would get the same consideration that you would give your own families. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tolliver.
Mr. Tolliver, before you leave.
Yes, sir.
This occurred when?
September the 5th.
And today is the 18th.
Eighteenth, yes, sir.
So that was 13 days ago. So when did you move away from your residence as a result of this particular situation?
Of September 7th.
Why was it two days later when you moved after discovering when it occurred?
Well, we were trying to clean up and trying to stop damages from getting, from escalating, trying to clean up as much as we could, but the stench, the odor, my wife is handicapped, so we're trying to do all that we can, but we couldn't stay in there because of the stench, and we're not hazmat oriented, so there were a lot of things that could happen with our health that someone who is a professional could handle. So we got our stuff and got our girls, and we went to a hotel.
I got a few more questions, because I have not had the.
Yes, sir.
Privilege to go to the location and observe and examine and investigate this. And as you're Alderman, I think I need to ask these questions, and I'm going to just take a few minutes, because you're here, so you're my constituent, so this is extremely important to me. Tell me in your own layperson words as to how can you best describe the scene and the smell, and just kind of lay out to me so I can have a good layperson visualization or understanding of what happened there.
Well, sir, we entered, I entered the home by myself for lunch. I stepped in water, and I stepped again, and I turned on the light, and there was sewage in my living room, sewage water in my living room. I went down the hall, and the toilet was bubbling over, and it was awful, because you could see my tub had sewage water, and it was brown. Our shower had sewage in it, it overflowed, so we have carpet, we tried to get, clean up as much as we could, but the stench got worse and worse. We have wood at our door, it started buckling, and because of the chemicals that's in it, it integrated with the rest of the smell, so we couldn't do it. We just, it was horrible. Even if you open the doors, you can still smell it outside.
Did you arrive at a conclusion that this was the fault of yours, or your family, or the city? And if it is the fault of the city, in your opinion, how did you arrive at that conclusion?
It was the city, the young man that came out that pushed the line back. He said it was the city, and I really don't think that my family and I should have to pay for something that was not our fault.
So the young man came out, when you say the young man, did he identify himself as an employer, agent, or servant representative of the city?
Yes, sir.
What did he say?
His name is Kevin, he's with the Water Department.
So when, what date did he come out?
That was on the 5th.
5th of September of 2018, that's the day you discovered it?
Yes, sir.
Now, how many people live in your home in addition to you?
Three others.
And it's your wife and two children?
Yes, sir.
What are their ages?
Fifteen.
Are they twins?
Yes, sir.
So you noticed that the bathroom and the water, to what extent, what areas your house did it go into?
It went through our living room. We have a split living room, and it went into both of them, into our bedroom, into our girls' room, both bathrooms, into our third bedroom, into our closets, into the
And did the city employee recognize this is actually a sewage? This was, is it actually, it was determined that's actually sewage that was in the house, right?
Yes, sir.
So where have you been staying since September the 7th, which was 11 days ago, almost two weeks to 2018?
The Hampton Inn.
And what does that cost you daily to stay there?
It's over.
Roughly?
It's roughly over about $109, $110, except when the game happened, and that went up.
So when you say $109, $110, is this how often, per day, or what?
A day.
When the game was there, you mean that this game this past weekend?
Yes, sir.
So what was the rate then?
I believe it went up to $127 for us. They understood the situation that we were in, so they worked with us.
Do you think you or any of your family members did anything to cause or contribute to the issue at hand at your location on Choctaw Road in Starkville, Mississippi?
No, sir, we all left home at the same time that morning.
What damages, if any, are you alleging to have sustained in addition to this amount that you've been paying the hotel for each day that you've been there since September 7th of 2018, being a total of 11 or 12 days?
Everyone was having problems with breathing, so I took my family to the ER. The medication we had to pay for, traveling to and from the hotel to feed our dog, we had to pay for, eating every day, we had to pay for. We lost a lot of clothing. We tried to save a lot of the clothing, and then come to find out, because it was sewage water, we were going to lose that anyway. So we lost quite a bit, sir.
Did you report this discovery and or incident upon your immediate awareness of it?
I reported it Friday, because we were trying to clean up Wednesday and Thursday.
When you say Friday, now, this will happen on September the 7th.
Yes, sir.
Of September the 7th, so that was, right, you reported on that Friday?
Yes, sir.
And this past Monday, so that's Friday a week ago.
Yes, sir.
So you are asking the city to reimburse you for all the damages that you have testified here to this evening?
Yes, sir, I am.
Mr. Attorney, on behalf of my constituent, I'd just like to just personally state, I think that this, I'm sure the mayor is doing what she can in her capacity as chief executive officer. It's been during my 25-plus years here as a member of this Board of Alderman, our practice, custom and tradition, to fully explore, examine, investigate all the facts of a situation like this, and if the investigation determines that the city was at fault, and that, if the investigation determines that, then the city, through its insurance agency or otherwise, would tender whatever compensation, if any, if, in fact, those are the key words here. So with that being said, I think we need to look into this, in my legal opinion, to see what. opinion, uh, to see what, um, responsibility and duty and obligation that the, um, that the city of Starkville has, and I'm not saying, I'm not reaching a conclusion here, but I would like to know, and, and, and I don't know whether you've, uh, engaged there, but I'd like for you to at least confer, um, and I'm saying this just as a communication, not a directive, uh, but I think it'd be good, uh, to confer, just like we'd do any citizen, and I'm not saying that we have to do that, uh, pay compensation, but I, but I think whatever the, the findings are, I think it'd be good to have a report. And this, and this, um, line of communication is no different from any other citizen. I just have a, a very strong, fervent, and passionate record to ensure that with all city matters, all, all city matters, whatever they may be, whether you're from Ward one, two, three, four, five, six, or seven, um, or, or treated like, and I'm not saying he's not treated correctly, I'm not saying that, but, you know, as this Alderman, I just wanted to bring these facts out and get them on the record, and just so he'll know that he's being heard, and not saying, uh, that the mayor has not done or handled it correctly, but I, as an attorney, I just wanted to get all those facts out, and if you would just confer with the mayor to see, and, um, and just, um, what action, if any, that the city should take.
Vice Mayor, we will. My, my understanding is the claim was tendered to Mississippi Municipal Liability Carrier, and that, that adjuster was on the ground Wednesday investigating the matter. I'm not aware of his findings yet, but I'll follow up with him tomorrow first thing and find out what the status is, so we can get an answer from Mr. Tolliver.
Yes, sir, uh, yes, sir. Thank you so much for your great work, Attorney. Mayor, I yield the floor, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, and let me say, Mr. Tolliver, uh, I know Servpro came out, and I know the insurance adjuster came out, and you should be receiving a letter from the carrier very shortly. I thought that they were gonna get it to you today, but, or yesterday, obviously, but, uh, you should be hearing from them very soon, and with the city attorney following up, should have some information to you soon.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, anyone else wishing to speak to? Mr. Taylor?
Yes, uh, Mayor, Vice Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Ward seven-
Yes, sir.
Alderman Vaughn, uh, questions I keep being asked is, is there's an ordinance for helmets in the city limits? What does the ordinance say for bicycles?
There is an ordinance, yes.
There is, or is not?
There is.
So that mean they got to have helmets to ride in the city limits?
Yes.
Okay, that was, I just wanna clarify that, because, you know, we approved the contract and everything, and, uh, that question was asked me, and I said, ain't no Alderman. I tried to get them to come up here, but they wouldn't do it. Next one is, we need to make sure that everyone is a registered voter in this city. Everyone, and you got family members or friends, you need to encourage them to make sure, 'cause the deadline is October the sixth, the election is November the sixth. The only way we can make a difference in this state and this nation is by getting out and vote, and if you don't go to post and vote, that's your fault or what we get. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Do we have anyone else wishing to make citizen comments? Anyone else wishing to make citizen comments? All right, thank you all, we'll close it for citizen comments. We have no public appearances this evening, we do have a public hearing. This is the second public hearing, and consideration to amend Starkville Code of Ordinances, Chapter eighty-two, Article three, Assemblies, Parades, and Processions, consistent with the city's special events policy. Any discussion with the board before I open it as a public hearing? Okay, seeing none, I will open this as a public hearing, if there's anyone here wishing to speak on the matter of, uh, amending the city code of ordinances having to do with assemblies, parades, and processions, please, now is the time, either for or against. Either for or against. All right, seeing no one, I will close it as a public hearing, this is an opportunity for the board to vote on that, it is consideration, um, so I will entertain a motion at this time.
Move approval, Mayor.
I have a motion from Alderman Little, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Alderman Walker. Any further discussion?
Mayor, may I recognize?
Vice Mayor.
Mr. Attorney, just tell the public what's the difference between this and what's already on the books, if anything?
Sure. There was, uh, the previous ordinance gave the police chief unilateral authority to approve certain parades, and what this does is point back to the city's special events policy. So this ordinance, uh, and the special events policy, for lack of a better phrase, talk to each other and are consistent with each other. This allows the, the Starkville Police Department to still have arrest power, dispersal power, and the city to have permit issuing power and application review power, and it also provides the chief with certain factors to look at for a special event, but that are not dispositive factors, they're just factors to weigh, to decide whether an event jives with the health, safety, and welfare of the municipality. Uh, but otherwise, uh, the terms remain the same.
And the board still has to file?
It does.
Okay, I'll make sure, okay?
It does.
All right, thank you, any further comments? Okay, I have a motion and a second. Uh, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. All right, next item is, uh, we call, uh, this is to call for a public hearing to amend the city of Starkville Code section related to transient vendors, and I'm going to let Mr. Latimer, um, give just a quick, uh, reference on this one.
Sure, be happy to. So, uh, back on August twenty-eighth, the city received a letter from the ACLU, and the same letter was sent out to various municipalities that day, we think maybe sixteen in all, and what the ACLU asked us to do is just take a look at one sentence in our transient vendor ordinance that they thought might be overly broad after a certain United States Supreme Court opinion, which was Reed versus Town of Gilbert from twenty fifteen. The Reed case had to do with signage, and said that municipalities could not impose tighter restrictions on signage based on content-based reasons. And what we've seen since that time is that other courts, the Seventh Circuit is one, the U.S. District Court of Massachusetts is another, is applying the Reed standard to transient vendors and panhandling and solicitation. And so what we've done is we've just clarified that to make it consistent with Reed. So if you'll look in your board packet materials in section thirty-three-two, we struck the first sentence and added a sentence at the very end that retained the intent of that section, which says transient vendors shall not block or impede pedestrian or vehicular traffic on public roadways, because that's what the whole ordinance was about. We struck the first sentence that was overly broad and talked about no solicitation or distributions or charitable asking of any kind while standing upon a public roadway, because there may be a situation where that is protected speech, and so that's our effort to cure that provision.
Mr. Carter?
So I guess the majority of my comments lately, somebody soliciting funds on the corner of grocery stores, and that is, from when I, you and I, Chief and I have, have conversations about that, that is not allowed in our code, correct?
It's not allowed in our code right now, it would be allowed after this, unless it's a health, safety, and welfare issue, the police would retain all of their authority from a pedestrian traffic flow, from a vehicular traffic flow, any type of health, safety, and welfare issue, they still have power to disperse as needed.
So this is going to allow that?
It would allow that, as, as protected speech.
What was the thinking, I mean, who, who's pushing this on the board, or what is, where is this coming from?
It's coming from the ACLU.
Okay, so as long as any, I mean, can they go out and tap on windows, and that's, that's what we're getting, is a lot of people coming on to, you know, tapping on windows and, and asking, and big cities obviously go out and wash their windows and ask for a donation as you drive off, what, you know, what are we allowing here?
Well, that's not specified in this ordinance, and, and we would have to come back, what we're waiting on doing is seeing a national standard emerge for panhandling and solicitation, and following that national standard and playing off of those other ordinances that are deemed constitutional. But as of right now, the issue before us is that first sentence is arguably unconstitutional, so we need to fix it.
Uh, on the record, I'll say I'm, I'm against at least having a welfare check on the individual, 'cause I, I think you and I have had conversations about this, I wanna know that, there's some people that do it daily, we're seeing the same people individ, I mean, daily, over and over and over in certain areas, but, uh, if it's somebody coming through town that's got warrants for their rest, something like, I'm calling, I'm calling the police after people call me, just to have a welfare check, so.
Right, and again, this is just a call for the public hearing, so we've got two more rounds of debate on this, and so more of these facts can be fleshed out as we go forward.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you, any other discussion? Okay?
Move approval.
I have a motion for approval from Alderman Walker, second from Alderman Miller, further discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. All right, next item up is, uh, consideration of the fiscal year twenty eighteen budget adjustments. Alderman Sistrung?
This, this is something that we do at the end of each year, we, we budget going in, we amend the budget occasionally during the year, and at the end of the year, we, uh, make a final pass through to be sure that things are properly recognized and, and budgeted. Um, the city clerk has worked on this, it balances, um, and I would move approval.
Okay, I have a motion for approval, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Little, further discussion?
Does this include veterans today or exclude it?
Just the budgeting in there.
This is a budget adjustment.
I'm sorry.
That's all right.
I was thinking of-
We pulled that one.
Yeah, that's right.
We will, we will, uh, take that one up, uh, at the next board meeting, so, this is for the budget adjustment, so I have a mo, uh, motion and a second, any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
All right, by a vote of six to one, motion carries. All right, uh, and we had item C under Board Business was pulled from consent, and this is the, uh, resolution declaring the intent to issue electric system revenue bonds with the municipality. Uh, Mr. Kemp, would you like to come up here, please, sir, and, uh, I believe Mr. Norris and Mr. Shore, you're here as well, for any questions that the board may have? Okay, while these folks are making their way, do we have any questions at this point of, uh, Mr. Kemp, do you wanna refresh our memory of what this is for, please?
Uh, I'd be glad to, Mayor.
Thank you.
Uh, this particular one is relates to electric division port, it would be primarily focused on the new substation that we plan to construct at the end of Azalea Lane, uh, the majority will be the station, but also in addition to that, there's quite a bit of transmission line associated with this, and the project excess, we're looking at about a three-year plan, so that's what this money would be primarily targeted for now, to set it up, make it available as we need it, and we get into the project.
And this is a replacement for the substation on, uh, industrial road, is that correct?
That's correct. That, that particular station was the oldest we had, that one will be, will essentially go away, we'll be moving to the other side, and, and in addition to a new substation, we will be receiving a special, I mean, a new delivery point from TVA, which provides better reliability to our system as well.
And it upgrades our capacity, is that correct?
It improves our capacity, and through this entire project, uh, it eliminates some of our operation problems that we have when we're actually switching, uh, currently because of the way the stations were configured, uh, there's a phase separation, which means in some situations, we have to take a momentary interruption, we want to eliminate that going forward, because that is a problem with some of our customers, so, uh, yes.
Okay, and you expect this to be concluded in, within three-year timeframe? Did I hear that?
That's correct, we should be receiving, uh, service in two thousand and twenty, uh, two thousand and twenty-one, somewhere near that, where some of the major work will be started.
Okay, and the other two gentlemen here are the money men, so do we have any questions of Mr. Kemp in his capacity as utilities?
I'd, I'd like to just say, I, I'd like to just say a couple of things, um, they're, they're not just money men, they're bond experts, and between them and the attorneys, that's a, that's a highly specialized field.
It is, I apologize.
Um, these are revenue bonds, um, they, they're not subject to our borrowing capacity and won't impact us in, in that regard in any way, and we've done enough of our planning to know that we have the revenue to support the debt service, and then it just gets highly technical after that, and y'all will see us through this, right?
Correct, yeah, all right. Any other questions or any discussion? Do I have a motion?
Some move.
I have a motion from Alderman Sistrung, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Alderman Little, further discussion? All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, by a vote of six to one, the motion carries, all right, thank you. Item D is, um, the engagement of certain professionals, that would be the gentleman that Sandra was referring to, that I just said, the money guys, so I did not mean to diminish your, uh, acumen nor your stature, so.
Move approval.
I have a motion, Alderman Walker, I have a motion for, from Alderman Walker, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Little, further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
By a vote of six to one, motion carries. Thank you, and you might as well hang around, 'cause we've got two more to go, so thank you very much. Uh, next item up, uh, Mr. Kemp, you wanna give us just a quick, um, overview of the water and sewer revenue bond?
Uh, I'd be glad to. On the water and sewer side, this is primarily focused to the sludge problem at our lagoon. We've talked about that for several, uh, meetings prior to this, uh, it's an issue that needs to be resolved next year, uh, we're already trying to get that in place, and with that new system, uh, will be some upgrades to our existing wastewater plant, so, uh, that's what this fund is primarily targeted for, uh, we talked about it earlier, is to make it into part of our rate structure looking forward, but it's an immediate need, and we anticipate that being about an eighteen-month process from the time we kick it off with our engineering group.
Okay, thank you, any questions of Mr. Kemp, Mr. Little?
I got one, too, um, just thinking, earlier I was pondering this, uh, the wastewater situation, how much waste do we receive from the university, would you estimate the percentage of overall capacity?
I, I think, uh, on the contract, it's somewhere around thirty percent, we're actually working with the university, 'cause that's kind of, that's an agreement that's in place for several times, there's meter, metering in place right now, uh, but that number continues to increase, but that, the actually, the actual plant was, was set up in collaboration with the university to take all of the sewage or collection throughout this region, so everything would fall, fall into-
What sort of annual payment do we get, part, they pay us, I guess, for that service each year?
We swap back and forth, so we use part of their infrastructure, is it makes the loop coming back through, so we, we actually calculate the flow that comes from the city back through the university, and then they add to that, which actually increases that volume that comes to our plant, so, so it's kind of a, a back and forth situation, so it's an interable, tied-together system, and we each, uh, would share that cost.
Thank you.
Thank you, any other questions from Alderman Little?
Move approval.
I have a motion for approval, Alderman Miller?
Second.
Second from Alderman Sistrung, further discussion?
No discussion, uh, other than to say two major infrastructure issues that are getting approved tonight, and revenue bonds to support a significant upgrade in the electric service, and a necessary upgrade for, uh, our sewage treatment plan in the lagoon system that we really have no choice but to, to make sure we do that, and opportunity to, to make sure that we continue to provide quality service for the next, uh, foreseeable future by, uh, approving these bonds tonight, so, thank you for bringing this to our attention, and I appreciate everybody supporting this to make sure that we have infrastructure that supports the services that we need in our community.
Absolutely, thank you, and how long, uh, what is the life of the lagoon once we do this? Does it have a life, or is it just a-
The plan we're doing right now, we're going to more of a sustainable approach, we're gonna actually divert and convert the sludge to more of a reusable product, and so, uh, eventually, we're at capacity in our existing lagoon, so our options that we did consider was completely removing all of that, which was huge costs associated with it, the other was maybe buying us a few years before we had to deal with it, uh, this approach, uh, I think will sustain us as we go forward, and eventually will lessen the need for the lagoon. It'll still be there, it's an emergency backup, but, uh, but, you know, we think this is the solution for the long term.
I think it's an excellent solution, and I wanted to ha, have you say that, because I think that is exactly what we should be doing, so congratulations on coming up with the right answer. Well, did that sound bad, I'm sorry, congratulations on coming up with such a good answer, okay, I, I apologize. Um, all right, so I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
All right, by a vote of six to one, motion carries. And then the next, uh, last but not least is again the professionals, who are gonna help us through the bonding process. I have a motion from Alderman Miller, I have a second.
Second.
Second from Alderman Sistrung, any other discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
By a vote of six to one, motion carries, thank you, gentlemen, appreciate it. Alderman Vaughn?
On the holiday schedule, we moved to consent, but did we scratch the virgin date? Then what we did?
Well, we, we, um, pulled it from the agenda.
We pulled it from the agenda.
Yes, sir, we will be taking that up next time around.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, yes, sir. All right, uh, next item we have is under, uh, the planning, and it's item B, which is consideration of a special event request by Linda Young to hold the Living Life in Pink Breast Cancer Walk, October the twenty-eighth, with city participation with in-kind services.
Move approval.
I have a motion from Alderman Miller, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Sistrung, discussion? No discussion, seeing, I'm sorry?
Mr. Havlin and Ms. Corbin, I didn't see the insurance in the packet, do we have insurance on this event yet? So this would be contingent, contingent upon them providing insurance within twenty days of the event?
Correct.
Let's add that as condition.
Amend your motion to include that.
Please.
Okay, all right, um, any further discussion? Any further discussion? Okay. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
By a vote of six to one, motion carries. Next item is a special event request by the Starwell Area Arts Council to hold the Starwell Sunday Fun Day event on October 28, 2018, and have city participation with in-kind services.
Move approval.
I have a motion from Alderman Walker, a second from Alderman Miller. Any other discussion?
Insurance?
It's provided.
Insurance is provided. And this is going to be on University Avenue, so in front of the Mayor, former Mayor Camp's Coliseum-looking area. Is that correct, Mr. Bateman?
That's correct.
I tell you what, would you come up just real quickly, because this is not an event that I think the board has seen before, so let's provide just a quick, just a quick overview, if you don't mind.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Board. I'm John Bateman. I'm the executive director of the Starwell Area Arts Council. We are the fiscal sponsor for Sunday Fun Day. If you haven't been, that is a grassroots-started art market that involves, it started by a bunch of young artists, and basically fiscal sponsor is a fancy term that means we provide financial oversight for them. They conduct most of their programming, well, actually, all of their programming, and it's been previously conducted on private property. The request is to close the street so that this is the last one of the season. It's October 28th, and to be conducted between the cemetery and the Parthenon on University.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions, since we have him here? Okay?
I have one. No questions, but again, just to comment, this is part of the proposal where we put together the entertainment district, if you will, where we instituted the bollards, and the part of the roads that'll be closing will be using those bollards to do that. It'll make sure that while University Drive is actually closed in that one section, still people are going to be able to access through Jarnigan Fellowship and Russell Street, so being able to move back and forth, there will not be an issue, might just a slight detour. But I look forward to this weekend. I think it'll be a great weekend, a great way to end a victory from, after we beat Texas A&amp;M the night before, to go buy some good art at Sunday Fun Day on October the 28th. So I would encourage everybody to come out and attend that event.
Yeah, and it's fun. Having attended it before, it is a fun event, so, all right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
All right. By a vote of five to two, the motion carries. Thank you. All right. Dropping down to Item G, we have a request for preliminary plat approval for subdividing 11.04 acre parcel into fifty-one lots located on north side of Garrett Road, west of Old West Point Road, and an R3A zoning district. Is the applicant here? Hi. Would you come forward, please, sir? Hi there. Would you introduce yourself?
I'm Todd Sandridge. I'm a cross-town builder.
Okay. Mr. Sandridge? Okay. Would you like to give us just a quick idea of your plan?
Sure. Yeah. We are...
Reference the board up there?
Okay. We're planning developing fifty-one lots in three phases. Our architect, who we would like to spoke with last week, looked at, we want to do a cottage-style, smaller home, similar to what's in Creekside next door. You know, similar, except, and we are going to be applying for a variance before the board so that we could move the houses up a little bit, not park in the front, rather than, you know, have side parking and go and park in the rear.
Okay.
We'd like to create a front porch neighborhood that, you know, people can come and congregate. We've got several of those in Madison County now, and I feel like that, you know, aesthetically would look a little bit better, and I think, got a lot of, you know, response, and people want to come in.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Do we have any questions of the applicant?
No questions, other than I would ask the city planner. The plat meets the zoning, looks like the lot layout is going to, everything going to apply, other than the variance that he just spoke of, of which I will absolutely be supportive of parking in the rear as opposed to the front.
Yes, it does. And part of the DRC requirements, we wanted a corridor here, pedestrian connectivity to go to the north, to the sidewalk, leave the, and then we're also having the right-of-way end on this property, which would allow for these two future properties to develop out in the future and kind of create a grid. Developers agree with both of those, and have shown that on.
Okay. All right. Thank you. We appreciate having you in town. Any other just questions of the, of either the planner or the applicant?
No question, other than to say, as we move forward through DRC with the final plat and moving forward, just to make sure that we look at any issues related to buffer requirements, to make sure that they were all on the same page of what's required there. But look forward to the development. I appreciate the opportunity of leaving the green space that's going to be to the south and the, allowing that pedestrian connection and the future opportunity for further development to the west, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
You all very much.
I have one.
Alderman Little?
Do we know what that, this area where Bay Meadow Drive for those houses is going to look like? Is there going to be proper vegetation, separation between, or...
As part of the rezoning that took place last year, on March 15th, 2018, the requirement